Ladies and gentlemen, would everyone please stand for the pledge? Andrew Chomko, would you like to come up to the podium? Andrew Chomko is an Army veteran. Corporal Andrew Chomko served in the United States Army with two tours of duty in Iraq and Afghanistan. He served with the 75th Ranger Regiment and as a first Ranger. And numerous, he has numerous medals, including the Joint Service Commendation, a Joint Service Achievement Medal, Army Achievement Medal, Army Good Conduct Medal, National Defense Service Medal, Afghanistan Campaign Medal, Iraq Campaign Medal, and Global War Terrorism Medal, just to name a few. And also, his father was a Ranger during the Vietnam War. Thank you for your service, Andrew. The floor is yours.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Bridgette, thanks for coming in too. Thank you for being here today. And Andy, thank you. Thank you for your service. It really matters. Until your death, we say hello. Okay. I'd like to bring this Tuesday, July 25th, 2015 Board of Commissioners meeting toward 10:00 after 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioners Conference Room. Okay, a motion for the approval of minutes. Do you have a second? Uh, roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to have Jason Cavulich come up to the podium. Jason is our Director of Area Aging. We recently had a terrible, terrible loss. We last thought Jennifer Zeskeski, who worked for Area Aging for almost 20 years, and she was case manager for Area Aging, and she really gave a lot to the people of Lackawanna County and cared about the elderly. And her death was just so untimely, and she was so young. And we just wanted to have the Director come up and say a few words, and if any of the employees that are here would like to say a few words, because it's a bad, it's a hard law for the people of Lackawanna County, especially our government.
Good morning. I'm here with my administrative team and one of our care managers, who is a very close and personal friend of Jennifer's. We all miss Jennifer every day. She was one of those individuals we encounter in life that's gifted with the ability to be the person in the room you needed her to be. She could give you advice, support, and most importantly, she listened to you. Listening is an underrated skill, in my opinion. However, it is the most important skill to have when you're dealing with a person that needs help. In my short time working with Jennifer, I witnessed her skills firsthand, deescalating a man suffering from mental illness. So he left our office with dignity and to be evaluated, rather than being removed against his will. Her many gifts, her abilities to provide assistance to people, we serve every day. She shortly before her passing, she helped a woman seeking services for a loved one. This card that I brought with me today is in the story that I just shared with you all, is just two of the examples how her and her work impacted the people and the lives of the community members we serve every day. She was a friend to many, an amazing advocate for older adults. She loved her family, she loved her friends, she loved her dogs. She served the older adults in this community very faithfully. The last conversation I had with Jennifer, she was proudly presenting me pictures of her new puppy that she purchased that was the newest member of her family. I was raised with the belief of honoring a person who has passed for the good they have done in this world. I hope the work that we at our agency do every day, serving the older adults in our community, honor Jennifer's memory and meet the high standards that she set for us.
That's very nice. It's just a shame, because like 20 years of knowledge and all the great work that she's done for our senior citizen population of Lackawanna County. Is anyone else from the staff like to say a few words? Commissioner Cummings?
Well, to the staff and to, I'm very sorry for your loss and for our loss as a county. As a geriatric nurse, I know very well how difficult dealing with some families and elderly can be. It's heart-wrenching. It's a hard job, because you're dealing with so many emotions where your loved one is requiring services that you might not want to have to provide, because you want to keep them home. And, you know, I understand how hard she has worked, and I'm really sorry for your loss in that department. My condolences to everyone.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
It's difficult anytime someone that young passes away. It's sad, and it's hard to lose a valuable employee, but, you know, much more difficult for her friends and family, you know, my deepest, sensitive thing.
I'd just like to end, we'll have a moment of silence for Jennifer and her family and all of her friends and her coworkers and everybody that cared about her. Thank you, Jason. She'll be deeply missed by Lackawanna County Government.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, proclamation presentation, 17-0201, Commissioner Cummings.
We have JFK Technologies, Joe Fendrick. Hi, Joe. Come on up to the podium. Tell us a little bit about what you do and how long you've been doing that.
We started in the incubator about seven years ago in Carbondale. And we started off with myself and one part-time employee. We now have roughly 15 employees. We moved into a new facility last year. We do precision machining, special equipment for packaging, and, you know, process equipment for manufacturers. So we're primarily a B-to-B type business, and, you know, we employ, probably out of our 15 people, about nine of them are skilled labor. So we provide, you know, full benefits, things like that, and...
Did you open this company on your own?
Yes.
What made you decide to do that?
There was a, generally, there wasn't too much, you know, available in the area, and I had a background in it. So I had worked at another local facility. I had been in Texas for about 10 years, and I'd come back up here. I was transferred to New York. So rather than make the drive from Scranton to Poughkeepsie, New York every day, you know, I looked for something local. And I had worked at a competitor for a while, and, you know, we just kind of went our separate ways, and I found my own niche, and, you know, now he has 20-some people, I have 15 going on 20, so...
That's great. I know what you mean. I mean, I was in nursing, I was running a business, and I thought, you know, I can do this by myself, so I just went and did it. Seems to be what you did as well, so congratulations and good for you. I'm so proud to have you here. And your building is located where, and how can anyone get in touch with you?
It's in 2 Clidco Drive, and it's in Carbondale.
Okay. I'm just reading to see exactly what you're doing. I'm not familiar with, and you're an engineer?
I am.
So where do you get that type of training? Where did you go to school?
I went to Penn State University.
Penn State trains?
Mm-hmm. And, well, you get a good background. I worked for the Japanese, Japanese company, and I did a lot of traveling. I did a lot of, you know, applications-type work, things like that, a lot of custom things, you know. So I spent, you know, just a little over 10 years in that type of environment, and you just kind of self-train, I guess, you know. You refine your, you refine your skills to the point where, you know, you can function out there in the world.
So, because I'm not real familiar with engineering, what is your actual title that you had?
I was a mechanical engineer.
Mechanical, okay, thank you. So I'm just wondering for future reference, you know, when you're hiring people, they're all local, and they have degrees in this, or do they not need to have a degree in it?
It depends.
Depends on the job?
It depends on the job. Again, we hire a lot of skilled labor, and the skills we need currently are in short, very short supply.
Yep.
So we struggle with that, you know, on a daily basis. And as a small company, you know, you try to hire for ability, you know, at this point. We've hired people with degrees, and they don't have the requisite experience.
Hands-on.
We've hired people without degrees that have been great.
Yeah.
You know, it just depends, so...
It's a lost art in our community. I think a lot of people have redirected towards college degrees, and, you know, this is something that they were discussing out in Washington, so I'm happy that you're here, because they're actually looking at apprenticeships in high school now. Apparently, years ago, now, I don't remember this, but if you worked a half a day out in the field, you're actually given credits towards that specific position, and I didn't know that that used to occur.
Co-op.
Is that what it was?
Co-op.
Co-op?
Yeah.
And they're looking at doing that again at the high school level, because of the fact that we just don't have the skilled labor force around that we need. And, you know, I think that's, well, that's something that I had worked on in my campaign. I look forward to continuing that, and hopefully, working with some of the school districts and VOTEC and Small Business Development Center to try and help that situation out. I think that's something that the Commissioners as well have been looking at, and I think that, you know, working with your hands is definitely a lost art in our community. I think we need to bring that back, and I appreciate the work you did and the initiative you took to open your own company. That's an awesome story. Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
It's one of my friends who actually works for you.
Oh, nice.
Tells me it's a great place to work, at St. Leger.
Okay.
And he worked for a small firm in La Plume, and they went out of business in the sheet-metal industry business, and he went up there, and he's very, very happy, and you do a great job, and you're a very good employer. I have a small machine shop in Scranton, have had it for 40 years, and it is hard to get employees, and it is something that's difficult. But if you treat people properly, and you work with them and train them as best you can, I'm sure you'll prosper. From all I hear, you're doing a great job up there. Keep it up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Now, Joe, you actually, you know, I mean, you actually are the ground floor all the way up. He came out of the incubator center. I'm gonna have Brenda get up, Brenda Sacco, from Economic Development. She actually received the SBA loan waiver through the county, and you expanded your business.
Sure.
So like, I mean, this really matters, you know. We're here, our department's here, so you know you could always reach out to us. We're very happy that you're growing. And I remember, I think, how long ago did you get that loan? Probably about four years ago? How many years? Three?
We actually had two SBAs, fee waivers, so we had done that in '13, and then in '16. And then we also have worked with him for a revolving loan, and we are trying to assist through the Workforce Development Board to help him find the skilled laborers that he needs.
Great.
So we're utilizing all the resources in our department.
Move a little bit closer to the mic, 'cause...
Right. We're trying, you know, we're utilizing all of the programs that we have and the resources in our department to try and assist Joe and his company and other companies like him.
Now, Brenda, anybody in the viewing audience, who do they contact if they'd like to, if they're interested in the SBA loan waiver?
They can reach out to the Planning and Economic Development Office, or myself, Brenda Sacco, I'm the Deputy Director, or you can go to our website, Lackawanna County, and the Economic Development webpage, and all of our programs are listed on that page.
Like, Joe, you're the proof that you could start from ground level, and you can utilize government to help you to build, to build, to build. So that's why I wanted people to really realize, because those, you know, that loan waiver, a lot of people can't, I mean, they're saving a lot of money, and it's helping you with a lot of opportunities, you know what I mean? We also have a lot of other things going on. I'm not sure what type of business you have. We can help you with a grant for the front of your business, a little bit of everything, so that, you might want to discuss some stuff with Brenda if you get a chance today.
Sure.
So...
We were actually discussing it in the elevator on the way up.
Great. But, Joe, congratulations. We're very happy from where your business came and where it's at right now.
Thank you very much.
And up, phone number, anything like that, some phone number for your business, if anybody needs to call. Congratulations and good luck. Thanks, Brenda.
Thank you.
Oh, Joe, sorry. Chief of Staff.
Certificate of recognition, the County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize JKF Technologies in honor of achieving the designation of a Small Business Spotlight in Lackawanna County, given this 25th day of July 2017 by Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry O'Terriani, and myself, Commissioner Cummings. Come on up, Joe.
Congratulations. You came from the Government Center all the way up. Congratulations. Great job.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Joe, you really proved that the fact you work hard, I mean, you can start your own business. Congratulations. Great job.
That's all about.
Okay, Lackawanna County Government Center update.
Prior to the Government Center update, I would like to announce that the Board of County Commissioners held an executive session this morning on real estate at 10:00 a.m. in the conference room in sixth floor. Present were the three county commissioners, Solicitors Brazil, Solicitors Frederiksen, Solicitor Sarah, Chief of Staff, myself, and James Rodway, the Director of Community Relations. This meeting was held in regard to a real estate issue, and I need that noted in the record. Tracy, thank you. At this time, we're going to provide our bimonthly or quarterly update on the Lackawanna County Government Center, and I've asked a team of people to come today and make a brief presentation to us. Approximately each one of them will be speaking for two minutes. We will have four speakers, and we will be talking about the financial analysis on where we're at so far on the Government Center, how much money we've spent to date, a little bit about what our project budget is, and that will be done by Tom Durkin, our Chief Financial Officer. And Tom also, we're fortunate, not a lot of counties do, but Tom is a CPA, so we're especially happy to have Tom on board with us, and that saves us a lot of money by him being able to do that. And with us today is our project team, our project architect, John Palumbo, who's the President and CEO of Palumbo Architects, and he'll be making a brief presentation to us. Gary Cavill, who's one of the principals in Greenman Peterson, Inc., GPI, a leading engineering firm in the area, and Gary also serves as the county engineer. In addition, the county has engaged the services of Quandale to serve as construction manager, and today we have three representatives with us from Quandale. We have Rhonda Beamer, who does a lot of their public presentations. Rhonda may be speaking very briefly, but we're going to turn to Mike Criswicki, who is the construction manager on the job, and Jim Weber, who was the estimator. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask the team of the six of them to come forward, and John Palumbo, if Tom Durkin is, I'm sorry, Tom Durkin is going to speak first on the financial subet, and then I'm going to turn to John Palumbo, then to Gary Cavill, then to Quandale. After they are all completely finished, if the Commissioners have any questions at all, that's our team, and this is the time to ask the questions, get the answers. So thank you very much. Everybody could come forward, and Tom could speak first, okay?
Good morning, Tom.
Good morning, Commissioners. As the Chief Staff said, I'm just going to give a brief update as to what the project budget is first, and then a brief update as to what we've spent so far on the project. So the revised project budget is as follows. The renovations, the actual construction cost, is now estimated at $12,860, or $12,860,389. The architect fees estimated at $707,321. The engineering fees, $353,661. Fees for the construction manager, $695,958. We've estimated $500,000 that will be spent for furniture, fixtures, and equipment for the new building. Moving expenses, which include the cost of relocating our IT department, we're estimating at $1,626,500. And finally, renovations to the Gateway Building, because some of our departments will be operating out of the Gateway Building after we move into the new Government Center, and we're estimating about $250,000 of construction for the Gateway Center to make that available and ready for the departments that are going to be in there. Total revised budget is $16,993,829. To date, the county has expended a total of $807,775.76, broken down as follows. The construction manager, $27,790.76. The architect, $505,672.25. The engineer, $148,500. Our contract attorneys, $29,412.75. Connects, which is a consultant for the IT move, we've spent $5,000. And then we've spent $91,400 for IT equipment for the move, switches and things of that nature, with computer discount warehouse totaling $807,775.76. To date, we've expended those funds out of existing county funds. We have, as you're well aware, a $17 million loan with Fidelity Bank, and when we closed that loan, they gave us the opportunity to treat it kind of as a line of credit, where we could draw down at need and only pay interest on the amount that we've drawn down. As, again, as you're aware, when we did the borrowing, we had an option to do that or to do a bond issue. The bond issue, had we done that, we would have begun to pay interest immediately upon closing on the full amount of the issue. Because we did the bank borrowing, we're only paying interest on the amount that we have drawn down. To date, that amount that we've drawn down is only $97,000, which was the cost to close the loan. The additional $807,775 that we've expended has been out of existing county funds. Now, eventually, as those funds dwindle, we're going to have to draw money down from the bank loan, but because we haven't really ramped up the construction yet, we've been able to spend that money out of county funds, and at least to date have not paid any interest on it, which, as you're well aware, is one of the advantages of doing the loan the way we did it. That concludes my report.
Good explanation.
Very good, Tom.
Thank you.
Andy, can I get a copy of that report?
Yeah, Mr. Durkin will provide that to you, and at the end of everyone's presentations, then the three Commissioners could ask any questions of anyone, okay? Next on is Mr. John Palumbo, President of Palumbo Architects.
Thank you all.
Did I give you a promotion? You are the President, aren't you, John? Thank you.
Isn't only one person working there?
Yeah, me. Not for too long, though. What I want to go over is the schedule, and to show you where we are on schedule, don't get too hopeful, but maybe a little better than on schedule. We are, we, the architects and the engineers are to be completed by the end of September. Well, we, as architects, are probably figuring we'll be finished sometime in mid to late August, which we will then hand the drawings over to the engineers, which they've already been working on, to complete by the end of September. So that's the completion of construction documents, September 30. Anticipated bidding would be early October. We hand the drawings to Quandale. They then take care of all the bidding processes, and they'll put it out sometime in the early part of the month. We will anticipate awards after three or four weeks, so let's say, with all the legal requirements that we have to take care of, because we're going to have to hand this over to our lawyers to take a look, it's probably going to be early November. Notice to proceed would then follow, and construction would start in January of 2018 at the very latest. We were working towards December, but January is the late end of it. So we're trying to get in there the end of November or the beginning of December. So substantial completion of the project would be mid-December of 2018, or if we were to start any earlier, it might be sometime in November. But again, we have to wait till we get the bids in and talk to the contractor who ends up getting the project before we know totally where we're at on that.
You satisfied we're on schedule, Mr. Palumbo?
Yes, I think...
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Mr. Cavill, our county engineer, is going to give a two-minute brief on what's going on from his standpoint, please.
I mean, John pretty much brought up everything. We're right on schedule right now to bid in September. We've been working with John daily, constantly, to keep it on schedule. We've been working also on the estimate, trying to keep it within budget moving forward. Normal project.
Any problems with HVAC? We're going to be able, the system you explained to us was in fairly good shape and could be retrofitted? You want to address that?
Yes, I can. The system wasn't in as good shape as we thought it was. There's some maintenance issues, but it's not just normal maintenance.
It doesn't have to be replaced, though?
No, no. We're not looking at replacing it right now. We're looking at maintaining it. So that's our goal.
Thank you, Gary. Mike Criswicki, who's the construction manager from Quandale, and Jim Weber, who's his estimator, are both here, and they're just going to give us a brief update. Rhonda, do you have anything you want to offer? You're okay with, okay, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to focus my area from now until December, for the next two months, while the design team is finalizing the construction documents. Quandale will focus on two efforts. One is to start to prepare the project schedule, which will be a detailed project schedule based upon the scope of work per the design. And the other thing we'll be doing is starting to break down our bid packages, and that's something we will discuss in our pre-con meetings, as far as how many packages we're recommending. What we will do is we'll give a list of bidders. It is open to public bidding, but we'll give you a list of bidders that we recommend that we contact to make sure we get good coverage, so we don't have an instance where we have a package with no interest. So we'll prepare a bidder's list, as well as a bid package list, and break out the total project into those packages, and we'll share that with you, and then, once we get closer, we'll do the public advertising for bids. During the month of October, we'll do the pre-bid meeting over on-site with all the prospective bidders. Once the bids come in, we'll then take those bids and do an analysis of each bid and make a recommendation, make sure we have complete coverage and complete pricing for the intended scope of work. The county will give a decision based upon those bid results. We'll award contracts, and in the month of December, once we award contracts towards the end of November, that time will be spent writing contracts, making sure we have the bonds, the insurance certificates, and all the upfront submittals we need to start the early phases of the work. So there's, there'll be a submittal phase, where each of those contractors has to prepare and submit submittals for review by the design professionals to confirm that they are using the specified products with the intent of the design.
And Mike, you anticipate that we're going to be able to meet the schedule that Mr. Palumbo laid out?
Yes, and from a scheduling standpoint, right now, we're saying it's a 12-month schedule, but as we start to go through that, we're going to try to better that. I mean, if we can pick up a month, we'll certainly do that. Absolutely.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Weber, was the estimator on the...
Jim is our Director of Preconstruction Services, and he was the one responsible for preparing the estimate.
And Jim, you're fairly satisfied with the amounts that you prepared, and they all meet within our project budget?
Yes.
Do you want to have anything else you want to add?
Working with the team, and John, and Gary and his team, in developing the scope that we, with the project, it was a normal way of doing the business, but we got through the process and getting the budget where we needed to go.
Thank you. Commissioners, that's a brief presentation by all individuals. The only other person I would like to acknowledge is Jim Rodway, who's our Director of Community Relations. Jim has really been my point person on the project and has been overseeing it on a daily basis, and I again acknowledge and thank him for that. Jim, do you have anything else you'd like to add at this time?
No.
Okay. We'll now turn to the Commissioners. Do you have any questions for Mr. Durkin, Mr. Cavill, Mr. Palumbo, or Mike or Jim?
Commissioner Cummings?
I had asked that the dates be moved up, and I'm looking at the dates, and they're still not moved up, so I just am not happy with how long that's going to take. I'm just not, and I'm not going to hold back on that. And I'm not going to hold back on that. I think that this should have been moved up by at least to September, October, and I would hope that that changes.
Commissioner Terriani?
I'm going to reserve my questions for a later date, but I certainly do have some.
I have more questions as well, Commissioner.
Commissioner O'Malley?
I, too, would also like to see it be moved up so to be October, November at the latest. But at this point, I'm very happy where we're at. This is long in coming. It lives inside the leases that we've had for the past 10 years. It's a great project. And, you know, I've got some numbers that basically if we went to build a brand-new 255,000-square-foot building, we'd be looking at like $45 to $50 million. I mean, this is a great opportunity for us. You know, this is something that, you know, I mean, the money's already in place to pay down this debt. There wasn't a mileage increase or a thing that happened with the Century Located. It's a great building. Transportation accessibility, the intermodal's down the street. We're bringing back a street one-yard block of Wyoming Avenue that's been dead for years. It's for rent, for sale, for lease, and we're going to bring it all back. We're going to make one-stop shopping for people in Lackawanna County Government, and it's something that should have been done three or four years ago, but it's happening now. And I'd like to congratulate the team here that's doing it and just keep up the good work. It's really, I think it's been going great so far.
The last formal part of the, that I'd like to make the commissioners aware of is that we did formally open the request for proposals on the building here at 200 Adams Avenue a week ago last Thursday. They have been submitted to the building committee, who is reviewing them and making a recommendation. We'll be prepared to say something to the commissioners in early August on that. And we're cautiously optimistic upon our initial review that the amount of the received on this building will at least be able to offset the cost of what we paid for the building at the Globe Store, which is what our plan was all along. And more important than that, what our directive was is that this building be put back onto the tax rolls because we were taking one off and putting it on. So I want to make you aware of that, and we'll have something for you in early August. And I thank the team for coming together, and I thank you for all the hard work you're doing on this.
I'd also like to add the fact is that we took the initiative to make sure the day that we were signing that building, that we were going to make sure that this building was sold either today, by the day we leave this building, or months in advance. So it was going to be sitting here. It wasn't going to be off the tax roll. It wasn't going to be sold to a nonprofit. It was going to be sold and put back on the tax roll to broaden our tax base and keep it strong. So, you know, I mean, there's a lot of work that went into all of this, and it's starting to come down. There's not, the end's still far off, but a lot of work has been done over the last year and a half. And I'd just like to congratulate our administration and the team here that's in this room today. It's a job well done so far. We've got lots to do. Keep us under budget, keep us on time, and keep us even better on time if possible. So thank you to all of you for being here.
On this completion of construction documents for September 30th, who would address that, John?
What do you?
Well, what exactly is that entail?
In other words, the bidding documents, the, all the engineering and architectural drawings will be completed at the latest, that point. We, the architectural drawings will be completed at the end of August, and then the engineers have to take the rest of our drawings to complete theirs. It would be, we'd like to work a little bit before that. This is the, the out, this schedule that we gave you is the old, is the old schedule.
Right.
And we're going to work towards bringing this up earlier. I know how many of you would like to get this up earlier, so we're going to work towards that.
Thank you.
Well, we can't do that until we get the contractors onboard, so we know exactly what, we need their input also. Then we'll revise these. This is not the end.
So can we have another report next month to see if that happened?
We're thinking bi-monthly.
By September.
We'd want to wait till we got the bids in.
Yeah, you got to wait.
The bids will be coming in the end of October, the end of October, the bids will be coming. Then we can tell you when we have the contractor onboard, what's your schedule for completion.
But if you wanted to get those done sooner, would you be coming in earlier to let us know that?
If I can, if we can get the drawings done soon, yes, I'll let you know.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for, okay.
But I'm not sure about that. I don't want to make that.
John, just let me know, and I'll advise the commissioners. If that could be moved up and if they could be submitted to GPI to do the HVAC part, but be cognizant of the fact that, I mean, we want them done correctly for bidding, right?
Well, I just want to make sure that we're continuing to keep on you to get this done earlier. I know that that sounds harsh, but that's just the way I, I want to, I don't want to hear in October that, oh, well, wait, we didn't do this or we couldn't get there. So if we can get a sooner report.
Costs have a lot to do with it. We don't want to push this.
And I also have, and we're going to also have Attorney Bill Warren, once this is done, begin to prepare the construction contract. So we're trying to expedite and have everything ready.
Sort of in advance of our.
Correct, correct, correct.
Thank you.
You know, what's nice about this is sometime in, hopefully like October, November of 2018, we're going to be in a situation where the people aren't going to be paying any more leases, and the only thing they're going to have is rent receipts and lease receipts. This is a building that's going to be owned by the county of Lackawanna, their building, not like it's been for all those rental lease properties that we've had in downtown, up in Mayfield, up off Stafford Avenue with total accessibility. It's just, it's a winner. It really is. And I'm really proud of everything that's happened so far and the work that's been done and everybody that's involved in our team.
It will be great.
It will be great. It'll be a great day, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only? Okay. Resolution 17-0199.
This is approving current payables. Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables from the Lackawanna County General Fund, numbers 246, 235 through 247, 441 inclusive, Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $3,8595.60. And Controller DeBilyo is here to answer any questions.
I'd like to make a motion approving current payables. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. It's just, it might be a payable here to me because of that.
They're lucky to have you.
Controller, everything good?
Yes. All invoices that have been audited, approved, and already paid. And I'd like to thank the employees, the important employees of our controllers office for all that they do.
They do a great job. Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings? Yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 17-0196.
Awarding arts and culture grants. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby award arts and culture mini-grants to the following community organizations: Greenfield Township, $500 to the Greenfield Day Celebration; Jessup Borough, $500 for fireworks and concert holiday activities; Newton Township, $500 for youth painting class; Waverly Township, $500 for musical entertainment at the Community Square Fair; and Maureen McQuiggin, Director of Arts and Culture, is here to answer any questions.
Good morning, Maureen.
So this is just our rolling grant program for municipalities to apply for some funding to do community events that are arts or culture-related. So these are $500 for these programs that will take place throughout the year.
Does the board have any questions for Maureen? I'd like to make a motion to awarding to arts and culture grants. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings? Yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks, Maureen.
Thanks. And don't forget to come out this Saturday, Arts on the Square, July 29th.
Arts on the Square, big day. What time's that start at exactly?
12 to 8.
12 to 8, that's a great event. Okay.
Entering into an adult probation grant and aid. Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve and enter into the 2017-2018 Grant and Aid Continuing Program, the Department of Adult Probation. And Mr. William McCarthy, Director of the Adult Probation Office, is here to explain the agreement.
First of all, I want to thank the county commissioners for meeting with me today for this application and agreement. And it's our annual grant that we receive from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, from the Pennsylvania Board of Probation and Parole. And we need the endorsement of the commissioners today so we could send the grant in to be processed. Last year, the award was for $178,775, or $188,000, I'm sorry. And this year, award, award, I hope next year will be awarded, will be hopefully over $190,000. The grant is due by August 31st, so we're a little bit ahead of the game this year. And we'll need signatures on Pages 5 from the county commissioners board and Pages 6. We'll need the county controller and also the chairperson, Commissioner Patrick O'Malley. The Grant and Aid Program briefly has been, Lackawanna County has been in this program with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania under the Pennsylvania Probation and Parole. It sends us monies to offset our adult probation salaries for the probation officers, and we've been participating with it since 1970. And the nicest thing about this grant is there's no fees or there's no matching funds to the county. It's done on an annual basis, and it's done that we comply with certain standards. Last year, there were 77 standards, and again, we complied with 100%. So it's a very good grant. It's a grant that doesn't cost the county, and it helps, like I said, to cost out the costs. And that's the conclusion of my report. Are there any questions?
Does the board have any questions? Billy, thanks for the hard work that our probation officers do in your department. You do a fine job making sure everything's run well over there. It's not an easy job. Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into adult probation grant and aid. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings? Yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks, Billy. Thank you. Have a good day. 17-0198.
Entering into an agreement for legal services. Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an agreement with a private attorney for legal services and paternity and support matters with Court of Common Pleased of Lackawanna County, Domestic Relations Sections, Attorney Joseph T. Healy. And Kathy Hardaway, our Director of Domestic Relations, is here to explain the agreement.
Good morning.
Good morning. This agreement is for Title 4D attorney, that of Jody Healy, for the collection of child support. The approval by the commissioners will mean that we will be reimbursed 66% by the Pennsylvania Bureau of Child Support for all expenses incurred.
Okay. Does the board have any questions from Mrs. Hardaway?
Just a comment.
Go ahead.
I appreciate your work on this. Thank you very much. As someone who's utilized the services, and as I stated in our meeting, I really appreciate the fact that you initiated this, and I fully support it 100%. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Thanks, Kathy.
Kathy, great job. And I know there's issues where people do need to have a lawyer and legal opportunity to be able to be on the same playing field with other people, so this really matters.
It's important on the behalf of our children.
It does. It really does. Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into agreement for legal services. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings? Yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. 17-0200.
This is accepting a proposal from Yonder. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby accept the proposal from Yonder Corporation. On behalf of Lackawanna County Court System and Court Administrator, at an initial cost of $3,725.57 to create phone spaces in the courts, and Mr. Frank Castellano, the administrator for the court system, is here to explain the agreement.
Good morning, Frank.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. On behalf of the court system, I'm here today to respectfully request that you accept the proposal from the Yonder Corporation and to briefly explain what it is, as I have provided to each of you in a packet form, as well as a further explanation at the work session last week. This is all about attempting to provide the best level of safe and secure security for individuals who come into the court system with cellphones. Clearly, as we know, just about everyone brings a cellphone with them everywhere. The purpose of this project would be that when an individual comes through the security checkpoint, they would be asked by the deputy sheriffs if they're attending a court proceeding. So right now, as the pilot project, we're looking to do this simply for court proceedings, and we wish to start in this building. If the answer is yes, I'm attending a court proceeding, the deputy sheriff would say, please power down your phone. They would be handed a secure sleeve. The sleeve is something similar to something that you would put over a soda can or a water bottle. It is a very, very secure type of material. The sleeve will be placed in it, and it locks. The person would maintain that sleeve and that cellphone with them, so there's no issue of the collection of cellphones or cellphones having to be held by the sheriff's department, which is something they were very concerned about. Person would proceed to court, go through their matters, and then, as they were leaving, at the exit door, there's an unlocking device which is mounted to the wall. They swipe it, unlocks the pouch, take your cellphone out, throw the pouch in the bin, and go about your business. So obviously, these pouches are reusable time and time again. Sheriff Mark McCandrew and I, as well as President Judge Berace, have looked at many different options, researched many different options, spoken to people in other counties as well as other places in the country. Collectively, we believe this is the most efficient and effective way to provide cellphone security in our courtrooms. As you all know, we have had situations here across the state and across the country where individuals bring cellphones into court, even though they're ordered to turn them off, they're recording, they're using their video, and they're live-streaming hearings, which is putting everybody in that courtroom in danger: the victims, the witnesses, the undercover agents, the judges. Commissioners, we believe that this is a step that's necessary. I can tell you that we have vetted the Yonder Corporation. They are currently being used in five other judicial districts in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, in Philadelphia, in Pittsburgh, in Erie, in Beaver, and in Crawford Counties with success. I spoke to the court administrator in Philadelphia, who has purchased 5,000 of these devices, and he told me on the phone last week that this has changed the dynamics of cellphone security. So again, with that background and all the information I've previously provided to you, I'm respectfully requesting that you accept this proposal, and certainly be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Cummings?
I appreciate you coming in, Mr. Castellano. I was under the impression that Sheriff Mark McCandrew in your statement was going to be present at our commissioners' meeting.
May I explain? May I explain? Commissioner, he did text me about 10 minutes to 10 this morning. He did not realize that he had a meeting scheduled in his office, so he was not able to come. But he did specifically ask that I relate to all of you that he is in full support of this measure, and he intends to express that level of support when he sees you at the prison board meeting later today.
Well, I would ask, then, that we table this message, measure, because I didn't look for his support in this. I looked for his answer as to why their department isn't doing their job to make sure that these cellphones either are collected at the door or not used during the meetings. So unless I have that answer, I absolutely cannot support this measure.
Okay. Well, respectfully, I believe I can answer both aspects of that, just from a very practical perspective. Your concern about collecting cellphones as people come into the building. I can tell you, in my numerous conversations with Sheriff McCandrew, Deputy Chief Boland, as well as other sheriff's departments in other counties, the issue is this: it's one of liability. If the sheriff's department collects cellphones, there's nothing preventing an individual from saying, once they get the cellphone back, "You damaged my phone. You cracked my screen. You broke my phone." Or, "You entered my phone and obtained secured data." I can tell you, in all the conversations I've had with people throughout Pennsylvania, the sheriffs are very reluctant to collect phones for the liability. So I believe that, you know, that is the answer to question number one. Question number two, why don't they just have them, turn them off? Commissioner, the problem is, they are ordered to turn them off now, but people being people, some of them don't follow the rules. And unfortunately, there are apps now and there are ways to have your phone on and have your phone on recording when it looks like it's actually powered off. So I can tell you that the deputy sheriffs that are in the courtrooms, as well as the other court personnel, are very vigilant to the extent that they can to make sure people don't have their phones on, but sometimes it just doesn't work.
I completely understand your dilemma, but if they have a court proceeding and a court hearing, they should be made aware prior to not to bring cellphones in with them. And if they do, they should be refused entrance. I mean, what exactly is the sheriff there to do? I mean, we collect guns and we put them in storage. Do you get the same issue when somebody's gun is confiscated from them and put in whatever they're using down there, the lockers or whatever? I mean, there's still liability with that. What if somebody says you broke their gun? We still collect their guns. We don't let them bring a gun into the courtroom.
Guns are collected and Commissioner--
Down at the bottom of the building, they won't, they're not allowed to come into the building.
That's correct. Now, the vast majority of those weapons are collected from law enforcement officials, so you're not dealing with members of the public. And, you know, so I think that's a little bit different. One of the concerns that we have with telling people you can't bring a cellphone into the building is, so many of our litigants arrive at our court facilities by bus, by cab, they walk, they have family or friends drive them here. Not everyone has their own vehicle. So let's say somebody arrives for a 9:30 hearing in front of one of our judges and they arrive at 9:20 and they have a cellphone and they arrived here by bus or by cab and the sheriffs turned them away. Well, that completely disrupts the ability of the court to proceed with its docket that day. You know, we talked about that. Maybe we just put a moratorium on cellphones in the courthouse, but it's not practical because of the way a good number of our litigants arrive at our buildings.
I don't think as many people have carried guns as they do. Everyone has a cellphone anymore. I don't think that's really quite the same kind of issue.
Well, it's still their property. Property's property, whether it be a gun, a cellphone, whatever it is.
There isn't much you can do to a gun. There's so many things they can do with phones anymore. And, you know, I mean, if you, a gun would obviously be broken, but it's, you're not into a electronic technical device where you can alter it. I have an employee that can change your phone so that you think your phone call is coming from Singapore instead of Scranton. And he's got that ability, that technical knowledge to--
I understand your point.
I mean, I understand your point, but we did kind of talk about this and I'm going to make a motion to accept the proposal from Yonder.
Wasn't the motion already made by--
No, I didn't, I didn't do that. I did the questions first. I actually just want to, I understand what Lorraine's saying, but what I see with these little bags is that, one, we don't have to worry about if their phone gets broken. These phones, some can range from $100 to $900. They're very expensive. So it's in the bag, it's on their person.
They're not irresponsible, though, to bring it into court with them.
The problem is, is with people in general, they might pull out their phone and start, you know, taking pictures. They're walking through a metal detector, so if they have that phone on them, they're going to know they have it.
Right.
So then it goes into that sack and then that's the end of it. It goes on their person. And let me tell you something, they're going to want to stop to get it unlocked on the way out so they can get back to their phone to get their messages. I just, I'm just concerned with the victims. That's a big thing for me. I'm looking at the fact that, you know, I mean, you might have a PFA or domestic situation and someone's in there videoing and taking where someone's address is at and, you know, who this person is and who actually came and testified. So I just, I think the bags will work. I really do. And I'm looking at, just from being a corrections officer, because I see what, you know, goes on even out there. And the gun boxes, they're gun lock boxes, so they're locked in, so really you can't really touch their guns. And then they unlock them and leave on the way out, so. But I do understand what you're saying too about the fact--
I just think it's another expense--
I know about response.
Because somebody else isn't responsible enough or we don't, our sheriffs aren't able to. I mean, it's ridiculous.
See, what I was looking at, when I went through the federal courthouse a couple weeks ago, they would put the phones on the side, but the problem is, and they'd give you a number and then you'd walk away. If something does happen to those phones, what's going to happen, Frank?
It's their fault for bringing it in. They should have--
Well, they're going to, the first thing they're going to say is, "You broke her phone."
But they should be made to sign a release saying, holding us not liable because they were so irresponsible to bring this stupid phone with them when they knew they shouldn't. I mean, why are we always, you know, because I would rather, you know, have them sign a form saying, "We're not liable for any damage because you were irresponsible enough to bring it with you." Isn't that possible, John? I mean, isn't there a possibility to do that?
You might run into a big problem with the issue with the hearing. It's unfortunate. I mean, the rules are what they are and that's the way it should be. You go downstairs and watch. Two minutes before a hearing, people be there 45 minutes. They show up 15 minutes late and your sheriffs laugh at me down there all the time, "Why are you here so early?" Because I want, it's human nature, it's unfortunate, but did you get a lot of that with the system?
We, we--
Whether you're fair share--
We do, Attorney Sarah. I mean, people come at the last minute, they come late, and that's the problem with turning them away. It would completely disrupt--
It throws off the schedule and then--
Oh, exactly.
That one hearing is, you're trying to get in somewhere.
This was a pilot. Am I right? We were going to just try to test it?
The idea is, the idea is this, we're only looking to purchase 250 sleeves as well as the unlocking devices that would be mounted to the exit door, as well as the storage bins. And the idea was to pilot it in this building because this is, of course, family court, whereas we all know we have a lot of volatile cases and very difficult situations that happen here. And we want to see how it goes. We believe, based on all of the research that we've done, that it will be successful. But we didn't want to, you know, jump in with two feet and ask for a large expenditure. We believe this is a reasonable expenditure, $3,725.57. We believe it's going to go well. If it goes well, I'm going to insert in my budget for next year, a proposal to expand the program, but we really want to see how this goes as a start.
Of course, we're going to expand it. Why wouldn't we?
I'm sorry.
Maybe an issue about being forced to sign and the public hearing.
Okay, we're on.
Oh, right. Well, you raise a good point, Attorney Sarah. I mean, you know, and I did not say this in my presentation, but so much of what we do in the family court system is confidential. So I mean, you know, we could have an issue with signatures and all of that being made available, but look, Commissioner, I respect your concerns. This is not something that we decided overnight. I mean, for several months, we researched and we talked to people and Sheriff McCandrew talked to sheriffs in other counties, I talked to other court administrators, I talked to the AOPC about this. This is what seems to be the most efficient and effective program available today. We try as a court system to always implement best practice for the taxpayers. I'm sorry, Commissioner?
Relatively inexpensive.
Yes, yes.
There's not a lot of money involved in this.
No.
Right now, because it's a pilot program.
Okay, I think we're far enough. I'd like to make a motion accepting a proposal from Yonder. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
No.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks for coming in, Frank.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board.
Bob Bowles, Scranton. Joan gave me permission to come up first, so. You know, I've got a couple of things here that I may be a little longer today than I expected to be. The first thing I'd like to start off, and I will present this to the commissioners-- Can I get it out of the envelope? Somebody doesn't sound to handle the envelopes. This is a flag presentation that I'm presenting to the Marine Corps League and all members of the service on August 5th at the Marine Corps League here in Scranton. This flag is the 70th anniversary flag flown over the island of Iwo Jima on Mount Suribachi. Was there when the flag was flown. I purchased the flag at an auction when they had it up for auction and I couldn't think of a better place than it belongs than here in Scranton. I've been on this mission for almost seven years now to recover Sergeant Ghanos's remains and that of two other Marines who were buried in a cave somewhere on Hill 362 Able on Iwo Jima. And I will be going back on another mission, but this was first brought to attention of everybody, what I was doing by the Scranton Times. And they had did a story on this and it become national. And it's been national. When I was over there, it became worldwide. We met with the Japanese on a military base, the Black Hawk Base. We presented them with grave sites. I took the individual who did the grave sites, when he was on the island for a year and a half, authenticated his maps. Unfortunately, Mr. Crossen has passed away, but the Emperor, the Prime Minister of Japan has given me permission to return with our team and work in conjunction with the Japanese to recover the remains, not only of our people, but helping recovering the remains of their people that are in those caves. This will be done, as I said, August 5th, Saturday. I will be presenting the flag to the detachment up there with everybody else that's there. And ceremony starts at 2:00. And there's a dinner following that. It's a $10 donation to do that. I'm going to give this to the commissioners. That's one thing there. This is a story that was written on July 2nd, 2015. This is the flag raising on Mount Suribachi that Sergeant Ghanos film. Joe Rosenthal took the snapshot that we see on the walls every day, was the 10th frame of Sergeant Ghanos's film. Rosenthal's newspaper tried to hold the government hostage for this picture and they told him, "We don't need it. We have one from Ghanos." Even though Sergeant Ghanos has never been mentioned because he was military. And if we recover his remains, they're to go under the monument in DC as an honor to him. And this is the whole story that was done. It was written by the Japanese who interviewed us at Canton, Illinois with the family from Mr. Ghanos. And there's the story about everything he did. And on the back is about my participation in doing this as well. And it's been seen worldwide, but I've brought the attention here to Scranton where I believe it started and I believe where we should honor what we're doing with them. I'm going to present this to the commissioners. There's pens and stuff like that. I guess I give them to Andy or I could bring them up or, which way would you like it?
You could bring them up or give them to Andy, whichever you'd like.
Or would you like?
Bring them up. Bring them up.
Thank you. There's a pen for you. You can have another one. Thanks. And this is everything that's going on. Commissioner, right here.
Thanks.
That one's for Lauren.
Thanks.
That's real.
Thanks.
That'll give you the whole story. What that'll give you, commissioners, is the whole real story of Sergeant Ghanos. One of the things I'd like to do is on the date that Sergeant Ghanos filmed that, I'd like to put a proclamation making this his second home, if that's possible. And Sergeant William Ghanos stay here in Lackawanna County. The flag will be here. It's going to be part of our history now and the history of this nation by being at the Marine Corps League Museum where there'll be, they're for everyone to see. So it's important and I have the support of the President and the Vice President also going back to Japan to finish this mission and possibly bring more people home. So I couldn't be prouder to say that somewhere along the line Sergeant Ghanos chosen me to bring them the heck home. And I want them to know Scranton's is no home. The other thing that I've been involved with, and I brought it up in the past, is a grant to fund the study on PTSD. We've seen it, we're reading about it, but very few people are doing a darn thing about it. And people are blowing their brains out every single day, one way or the other. Dr. George Lindfeld and I have been involved in this. He's a clinical psychologist who's wrote many books, especially one called Brain on Fire. He's been here in Scranton. We had a reporter from the Scranton Times try it out to, not this character, but one of the other ones, try it out and understood what the system is. We were at the Geno Merly Center with it. And we'd like to try and get some funding and start it here in Lackawanna County. You know, people follow leaders and I think the leadership should be, if we're going to move forward, let's move forward in the part of humanity. I spoke to Colleen Phillips. I spoke to Billy McCarthy about it. I have total support from them and we believe that people will follow the leaders throughout this country if we started here. We've been known as innovators in this county. A lot of our good people that built this county, they started, people followed us around the world. We've had leaders that were in vice presidents and political. So Scranton's always been in the highlight, especially Lackawanna County here. And I think this is the time to put our people first and take the money and help the study. It's not a lot of money, it might be 15, 20 grand. Some people will want to come in and actually volunteer to do the study. And commissioners, if we save just one life, look what the repercussions are down the line for that family, the children and everything else that happens. So it's not just about one individual, it's about the multitude of individuals that just follow one person. So I'd like to see if you would consider doing that. And I'll bring George Lindfeld up. I've flown him up here twice already. He's with me in Sarasota and Bradenton, Florida, where I have interest down in that area and I spent a great deal of time there and got to really know him at one of the meetings that I spoke to with the veterans at Bradenton and in Sarasota. I've been speaking to various groups down there. And nothing could be more heart wrenching than to see veterans in agony, and not only veterans, people in a prison, I've been there, I've seen it, to see where they go. PTSD is not just limited to our vets. Somebody who witnesses a tragic accident, it's somebody who witnesses something different, a death in a family that they can't work with. This is how important PTSD is. It goes across a multitude of people for a multitude of issues. And I'd like to see us start it in this county. So I'll give that out to the commissioners. Not for the rest of my aggravations, here to drive you nuts with. I brought up on 81 going north between the Central Scranton Expressway and Drinkers Street. It's a washboard road. Now, PennDOT wants to go out and keep boasting how great they're doing on highways. Our roads are horrendous around here. You take 81 north before you get to Clark Summit and you hit that bridge up there where it's not level. Like, come out, pave it, level it off. You get tractor trailers hitting that grossing 80,000 pounds at 60, 70 miles an hour. How long do you think that bridge is going to last or the road's going to last when you're dropping all that heavy weight up and down? Let Mr. May go out there and stand there and watch it. And, you know, it's just absurd that we've been talking about 81. You drive your car up 81 going north and you're on a washboard. You hit wet road and your car is going to hydroplane. Sooner or later, we're going to have a tragedy and then we're going to say, "We should have did something." It's their responsibility, it's our county, let them come out and grind it down if nothing else and level the road out. They're the ones who approved millions of dollars to build a highway and the highway wasn't built the way it should be. It's just like that stupid circles down by the airport. I mean, they're the most ridiculous thing God ever put on this earth. You know, the simplicity of something is, the shortest distance between two points is a straight line. Not running around in a circle, almost getting hit by cars, trucks, because nobody knows where they're going, then such an idiotic thing to paint an airplane on the road. So I'm watching the airplane, but I'm not watching the truck hitting me, coming around the damn circle. You know, so, I mean, it's just pure waste of taxpayers' money. Go look at those Highlands down there. Trucks are running up, they're rubbing against them all the way around. I mean, you know, it's just not a smart thing. And as an accident reconstructionist, which I am, and I've traveled all over the world, those are the dumbest ones I've ever seen because they make absolutely no sense. And if that's where we're paying PennDOT to engineer because they want to put their name on something dumb, take them out of there and put something smart in, like a straight line to the airport. Another--
Okay, we got to wrap this up, Bob.
I am, I'm going to do that. One thing I would like to suggest after listening to all this today on the parking garage over there with the Globe, where our new government center, that any individual who's a county resident would come in doing county business, not have to pay to park there. I don't think we need to enrich Bassa League any more than we've already done in this city, especially with the city that is now charging parking space over there, five bucks for a parking space and we bought 500 of them. Yet now we got to go park on our parking space that we already paid for? That's what's wrong in our county. But if we could have it set up that people coming in-- But if we could have it set up that people coming in would be able to get their tickets stamped or whatever it is if they're doing county business. I think that's a courtesy we should extend of all the people here. And last thing, I got more, but I'll leave that till some other day. The last thing, Commissioner Cummings came to a Scranton City Council meeting. And I brought it up at the council meeting. She was speaking and they're ringing their stupid bell, distracting her attention. Even though she came in as a resident of Old Forge, she's still a county commissioner. And I faulted the council president, Wexler, and the other council members for not speaking up, tell her, "Stop hitting the bell and understand that when one of our commissioners comes to our meetings, we want to hear what they have to say." And should never have been given this courteous response that the council president and council did to her there. And I want to apologize for it as a resident of the city of Scranton for their ignorance that they did to you. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Joan?
How did you know?
He said he was first. He's going to let him first.
Joan Hoda-Wan, it's 220 Linden Street, Scranton.
Good morning.
Good morning. First, I want to go back to that yonder proposal on securing the cell phones. I was looking at that last night. I read the backup and I noticed in the backup that there were exceptions. The judge, the lawyers, stenographer, all the security guards and the press. Okay? You trust those people?
I don't. You know I don't.
Yeah, yeah. You're totally correct.
Mr. Horvath, you're taking a beating today, aren't you?
Although he's... No. But I haven't had anything with Mr. Horvath yet. We'll see. He's been pretty good so far.
You know, but I mean...
Yeah, Bob's saying character and I got Joan over here beating up too. Just time.
You've got to sometimes just sit back and do a sanity check. And it's not the amount of money we're spending on these sleeves and ancillary equipment. It's the principle of all that we cannot hold people to act like responsible adults. Last month, when the prison board was scheduled at the prison... I don't drive, so I walked down to the prison. And I get to the entrance and there is a sign on the door before you walk into the prisons and says, "We will shoot anybody that comes in with a cellphone." Nope. No admittance. Do not bring your cellphone past this point.
That's right.
So I did a prompt about face and I walked all the way back to my apartment.
Wow.
Okay, now, I mean, it wasn't anybody's fault. Maybe it was new policy because I don't recall saying that up there. I just happen to have my cellphone on me. I don't normally take it with me because I only use it for outgoing calls. It was one of those situations where I forgot to get it out of my purse. I don't take incoming calls, only outgoing in case there's an emergency. But you know, I said, "Okay." So I mentioned it, you know, at a meeting and they said, "Oh, you could have brought it into the desk." I says, "That's what the map with the sign said." And I did my about face. But you know, I mean, I have to agree with Commissioner Cummings on this one. It's not a matter of money. And the money's a pittance when you think about it, you know. But we ought to be able to have a poll and say, you know, "You're not permitted to bring a cellphone in here. We detected on you when you go through the metal detector. You can drop it in a bin at your own, you know, useful liability for it or you hit the road." Okay? Once the policy becomes publicized and becomes known, most people stop bringing them. Okay? I mean, I'll never bring my cellphone back to the prison under any circumstances. And again, you have a lot of exceptions. You going to trust all media people to, you know, bringing their stuff in? Any one of the people who are exceptions could, for whatever reason, decide to record and release information. So you know, I mean, I really am veering towards your stance on this, but...
Thank you.
Too bad you lost the vote.
Thanks, Joan.
Okay.
See, you guys are wrong. Now you know you're wrong because she said yes.
Yeah. Well, you know, if we... We never expect people to have to act like responsible intelligent adults, so they never will.
I know.
We're always given excuses. I was impressed by the overview that was given on the status of moving to the Globe Store. And I hope, you know, you can continue that. It's very valuable for those of us in the public. And also I saw the small article about the proposals on this building on July 21st was in the paper. But I have a couple of questions. What is the assessed value of this building?
We don't... Under Commissioner's new business... Commissioner's business.
Okay. And also I'd be interested in knowing if when you got those proposals, those bids in, was there a set minimum price that bidders had to meet? Or was there no set minimum price? Okay. The Gateway Building. Why is that a standalone bill? Why can't those functions be folded into the Globe Store?
Because it's... I'll answer that too.
Okay. If you would do that. But it was a good summary of where you stand on that. Okay, so now... And one of my pet peeves, since we're talking about it, is taxes, especially delinquent taxes. I didn't bring this up the last time I was here, but there was an editorial on June 30th, Doubling Down on Bad Tax Rules: Commissioner's Short Change Delinquent Tax Collection. And I'll tell you, you know, last couple of years when I've been working on articles on fraud and one of them is, of course, tax fraud. And I don't think the general public appreciates how much tax revenue is lost in delinquent taxes and fees. Now, I grant you, there are people who through no fault of their own fall on financial hard times and for whatever reason are struggling to pay property taxes or other taxes that they might face. But you've got to understand just how big the problem is. And you also got to understand that for everybody who for no legitimate reason gains the system and doesn't pay their fair share of taxes and fees, those of us who try to pay our fair share pick up the slack. How much slack would you say? Well, you know, we hear a lot about the Pennsylvania state budget. What is it, $2 or $3 billion in the hole that they have to figure out how to pay? There's a man, Professor Richard Thompson Ainsworth, okay? And he is the subject matter expert on one special kind of tax, and that's sales and use taxes around the world. In Europe, they call them VATs, value added tax. But he is the subject matter expert in academia about sales and use taxes, especially all states in the country. In the year 2010, it was a very good year, in Pennsylvania alone, Pennsylvania lost $1 billion, that is $1 billion with a B, dollars in tax revenue in one industry in sales and use taxes, restaurants. $1 billion. Now you start thinking, you know, if that's an indicator of, you know, you've got to look at the whole spectrum of taxes and fees, property taxes, income taxes, all kinds of business taxes and sales and use taxes, you know. And legitimate taxpayers and legitimate businessmen are picking up that slack. So my question for you is, after having ranting and raving on my pet peeve, what is your policy as commissioners for supporting the collection of delinquent taxes? What are you doing with your tax claim bureau, you know, to support them in collecting these delinquent taxes, understanding that there are some people who may have a legitimate issue, maybe a medical emergency or something else? But you got to know that the vast majority of delinquent taxes are people gaming the system. So maybe you can talk about that after I sit down. And last but not least, I'm sure you read this morning's paper, Donations Help Keep Library Lectures Series Alive, right? So now, don't shame me by having me find out down the road that one or any of you doesn't have a library card. But I'm going to give you your tickets to this event on September 7th at 7:00 PM at the Cultural Center. Derek Thompson, he's an author of Hitmakers. He's a senior editor at Atlantic Magazine. And he's one of the rising stars in journalism, okay? And he's going to be talking about what in our culture, you know, goes viral and how do we, you know, focus our attention and what causes us to shift our attention. This man is very, very bright. He detects trends. He has degrees in business, in law, in political science. So he's a great speaker. So giving you your tickets. God forbid one of you doesn't have a library card because it's free to anybody who has a library card. Okay? So no tax dollars have been used in this event.
Thanks, Joan.
Okay? And you all better be there because you got enough warning not to cook anything like that. Okay? We do good work. And he's well worth hearing. So I'd like to hear your ideas though on delinquent taxes, if you get that and the update on what you're doing with the Gateway Center and the eventual sale of this building. Thank you.
Thanks, Joan.
Okay.
Good morning, commissioners. My name's Martina Soden. I'm head of reference services at the Scranton Public Library, 500 Vine Street. I'm bringing to you today an event that's actually next month, August 21st, Monday, August 21st, I believe. That's the day of the solar eclipse. And you know, it's a big day and NASA's doing a lot of programming, but the library's also covering a lot of programming for the solar eclipse. So you can join the library for an eclipse viewing party on Courthouse Square from 11 to 3:00 PM. And at that event on Courthouse Square, we're going to be giving out a limited number of eclipse viewing glasses. In Pennsylvania, it's going to be a partial eclipse, but you can come out onto the square. We'll have the glasses to hand out, first come, first served, bring your families. And it's just going to be fun. Weather based though. We hope that the weather's going to be beautiful so everybody can have a view of it. If the weather doesn't hold out for us or if you want to actually watch the whole thing, you can actually come to the basement of the children's library that same day, 11 to 3:00, where we are actually going to have the NASA viewing on our TV up. So you can actually see the total eclipse, following it from the beginning to the end. And we're also going to be covering upstairs for children. Ms. Gina is having an eclipse workshop in the Lackawanna County Children's Library. It's for grades four to six and they're invited to join before the live stream at 11:00 AM to learn how the eclipse is formed. And it's going to be using a STEM kit donated by NASA. So and then after that, they can also, families can also stay in the children's library upstairs as well and watch the eclipse up there. So we're going to have three different areas where you can. So you can watch the eclipse in the children's library with your families and with the children, downstairs in our community room in the children's library, or you can come out on Courthouse Square and get your eclipse glasses and view it there. So thank you.
Thanks, Martina. Thank you. Any others? How are you?
Fine. How are you? Lois Ann Linco, Jefferson Township. I spoke in May about reassessment. I am still in favor of it. I did have a hearing. I was successful in getting my assessment lowered after 43 years. But I feel that since the buck was passed to the voters, that they need information, not scare tactics to say, "Your taxes are going to go up and if you're elderly, you're going to lose your house." I mean, I'm elderly. But I think that they need information and about the disparity of assessments. And if they're going to make a choice to vote for or against it, they should have the proper information. And I think it would be up to the commissioners to maybe go to places where people... Obviously, everyone can't come to the meeting, but I think that they should get together, hand out information with the facts of what would actually happen in places like, say, the farmer's market or where there are groups of people that are property taxpayers. I think you owe it to them since they're going to have to vote on it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your...
Thank you.
She went for reassessment. She hadn't done it in 45 years and she did good.
Oh, good.
She came in on June to talk just about it. So anyone else before we start with Commissioner's comments? Okay. Commissioner Cummings.
Bob, thank you for bringing this information in. In regards to PTSD, you are absolutely right. It does not just affect veterans. And as a nurse, I can tell you, it's... It also affects those that have, in regards to domestic relations. It affects those in car accidents. It affects those that have been traumatized as children in regards to some of the problems they've had with child abuse. It's a very serious issue and I completely agree. And if there's anything we can do, I will... I'm sure that we'll be discussing this for future reference. And thank you for bringing this information into us. We always want to help our vets. I know Commissioner O'Malley is a big proponent for our veterans in the area and...
If I may, Commissioner, not to interrupt. If you would like to understand more about the process that's in place right now with Dr. Lindfeld, I will bring him back here. If the commissioner set up a time and place they want to meet with him and he could sell it, he's the one that's involved with it.
That would be something you could discuss with the chief of staff to get that implemented, yeah. But thank you for bringing the information to us. I greatly appreciate it. And in regards to the issues that are with the parking, that's the stuff that's wrong with our county. I tend to agree that that's with the city, not the county, because I mean, that wasn't our decision up here. But I do appreciate the fact that you did stand up for me with Scranton City Council. And I completely agree with you 100%. I think that that was uncalled for and I think that should have been stopped. But I appreciate that you did defend me in that regard. Joan, thank you. I have another defender for today, so I'm like, I'm just having a great day now. It's so opposite of what I usually get. But I do thank you for bringing the subject on the cell phones up. In regards to the Gateway Center, I'll leave all that up to Commissioner O'Malley because, you know, the Globe was his idea. I did support him in that effort and I continue to do so. But you know, he... I think that he would be best suited to answer those questions. Delinquent taxes, as someone who's been affected and a single mom who's had areas where I had some troubles there and a business owner, there are instances that can be resolved. And I think our policy here, and from what I've been hearing, discussing this with both John Foley and Ron Koljewski, our policy basically is, within a two-year timeframe, if you don't pay your property taxes, you lose your home. So it doesn't get any more severe than that. You know, and they've been losing their homes left and right in this county. So with tax sales, is there something wrong, Andy, you're looking at? Okay. That's the basic facts of the matter. I mean, we do upset sale. We do judicial sales. We have thousands on a repository list. We have over 1,000 properties. We now have a land bank, which Commissioner O'Malley has tried to help with some of these properties that have been abandoned or left to us at the county level. And you know, there's still properties on that. Now we have a repository list and we also have a land bank list and we still haven't gotten rid of them, so...
We're 25... I think we're going to be like 28 back in the tax roll. Yeah, probably in the next couple of weeks. It's coming fast.
Well, that's good. You know, and I... It's just the economy right now. It's so... I'm hoping that this can be turned around, but you know, it's been so difficult with the cost of healthcare and the inability to pay for it. And I mean, it's... For me myself, it went up the first day I started here. I still had to pay for my coverage for a month, so it was 300... It went up to 384 for me for my health insurance as a single woman. And my deductible went up to $7,500 a year. I mean, that's just ridiculous. At this point, this January, it probably would have went up to over $400 a year. And I would assume that it went... Would have gone up another $3,000. that it would have gone up another $3,000 for the deductible, so I would have been paying a $10,000 deductible, which essentially means that I wouldn't have insurance for the first $10,000 of expenses. And, you know, if you go to the hospital, I did have a situation where I ended up in the hospital, and I had a $1,000 bill sent to me between the hospital and doctor x-rays. And I had to go on a payment plan. So you're looking at a payment plan of $70 I was on a month, in addition to the $380 a month for the premium. And then the doctor's visit was on another payment plan, and the radiology was another payment plan. So essentially, $500 a month in addition for health care. That was costing me as a single woman with no children, which, that's just ridiculous. I hope to God today the vote goes through, that we repeal this monster bill, and we get back to normal here in America. So I would encourage Senator Casey and Senator Toomey to vote to repeal the health care bill today. Whether they hear my words or not, I would hope that that's what their actions are. Commissioners, going out to the public in regards to reassessment, absolutely 100% on board with that. And I agree that the facts have to be stated. It has to be non-biased. And I would hope that other officials wouldn't presume to know all the facts and claim that others don't, especially when they may have some interest in those specific fields. I'm going to limit that to my comment, other than, yes, I agree. The facts need to be presented. And, you know, recently, I myself have been accused of fear mongering in the local paper. And, you know, this attempt at mockery was so insensitive to the important issue of, you know, I mean, it's just, it's just not right to interpret somebody's words as not factual when it's an opinion that's based on facts that I've learned. "To be sure, I am concerned that reassessment will have an adverse effect upon elderly citizens with fixed income. Common sense indicates that a disproportionate number of those who have resided in homes, which have not been reassessed by reason of a recent sale, are elderly citizens who more than likely are on fixed income and have limited means. Reassessment may have an adverse and disastrous economic impact upon them." That is a matter of fact. Now, in addition, it is doubtful that reassessment, which is revenue neutral, will have any significant effect on the overall amount of city and school taxes paid by the residents of the city of Scranton, since the city and the school district have the same boundary as the total tax paid to each entity will be the same by Scranton residents once reassessment takes place. While the reassessment process may spread the tax around, the total tax paid in these municipal entities remains basically the same. Accordingly, cries by some members of other officials that reassessment will reduce the tax burden of city residents regarding the two most burdened taxes that they pay are misplaced and erroneous. Moreover, reduction in millage will only allow for future increases in tax millage without court approval. My concern is that reassessment will not deter the same irresponsible management of some school affairs, as taxes can be raised by simple vote of a majority of the two taxing entities. In essence, irresponsible and reckless spending will not be limited, and in fact, irresponsible policy will be encouraged." I look forward to the discussion on this, and to stop some of the misinformation that's out there. I did attend the Scranton City Council meeting. I don't want to go on for that, because I did promise them that I would let that issue rest, and I will. But on reassessment, my statements on reassessment are fact-based. And, you know, until somebody can tell me that they're not and prove it to me, then I don't think that should be a statement that's made in the only newspaper we have in the area. And I'll leave that at that as well. Joan brought to our attention the fact that we're going to have an event in... Let me get her ticket. Where'd I put it?
Here.
Got it?
Sorry.
Yeah, I lost my, too many papers. Derek Thompson, this was something that I had been completely decimated in the local newspapers on my decision. However, it turns out I was right. So again, three things. I'm going to go and get a lottery ticket today. Donations help keep library lecture series alive. It just goes to show you that if the public really wants something and they're interested in it, the private sector always will support it. We have very good people here in Lackawanna County. They're interested, and when they're interested in a subject, they support it. And I applaud the efforts of those that went out and got this done. And I appreciate Commissioner O'Malley's compromise on the budget with me to show that this can be done, and it was done. And I'm really happy with the work that they did to get that accomplished without utilizing taxpayer dollars. And lastly, Martina came in and talked about NASA and how they're going to be holding another event. And she's just a great...
Partial solar eclipse.
Yeah, partial. You know, I'm not one that's big on this kind of stuff. However, when I did go out to Washington this past week, one of the department heads that runs NASA has, did address us, and she brought up a point that the STEM kits were donated by NASA. And for the public, NASA is back on board this year. We will be launching in September, hopefully, if all goes well, which is the first launch in over eight years, because we weren't, we weren't funding NASA before this year, so, in that program. And I'm happy to see it reinvigorated. And this is just one of the areas where you can see the government changing a little bit, and we're getting some of that money here. There's a few businesses in our area that are funded, and nonprofit institutions, the Nurture Nature Center in Easton, the Society of Women Engineers in Philadelphia, and Mancorp, Inc., in Huntington Valley, and 36 businesses that contribute to NASA. The two companies that receive the most funding from NASA here are Air Products and Chemicals, Inc., located in Allentown, which receives 2.4 million plus, and Analytical Graphics in Exton, which receives 1.3 million. So NASA has, serves a big part in Pennsylvania, and I'm glad to see that our library is utilizing some of their funding for something positive for the community. So thank you, Martina, for that. And I did have another issue, but I'm going to hold that off until the next meeting. So thank you very much.
Commissioner O'Terry?
Very good.
Can I see that?
Which one?
The one from Joan, right down there, right under your newspaper.
Oh, the newspaper.
Right there, right there.
Yep.
Okay. Just want to let everyone know that our August 9th meeting is going to be changed to August 2nd, Wednesday, August 2nd, 10:00 a.m. at the Lackawanna County Administration Building. And our August 23rd meeting is going to be changed to Wednesday, August 16th, 7:00 p.m. And that's an on-the-road meeting. We don't have a location set yet, but that will, we'll let you know in the next week or two. But the next week's meeting will be here on Wednesday, the 2nd, 10:00 a.m. for everyone in the viewing audience. I'd like to thank Joan. Joan really loves the library. She loves everything that goes on there, and I'd just like to congratulate her. And please remind everyone that Derek Thompson's going to be here on Thursday, September 7th, 7:00 p.m. at the Scranton Cultural Center. Please make sure you get a ticket from Lackawanna County Library System, you know, and support the lectures. Also, I'd like to thank Bob Bowles. Please, everyone, remember to come out. Iwo Jima flag presentation, that's going to be to honor Sergeant William Gess, how do you say, Gessnost?
Gennost.
Gennost, Saturday, August 5th, 2017. And that's at the Marine Corps League on East Mountain, 1340 Alder Street on East Mountain. Please come on out. It's a 2:00 p.m. ceremony. It'll be great to be able to, you know, I mean, all of us remember that, remember that picture, you know, with the flag being raised. And this is the individual who actually made it happen. He never came home, so. But please see if he can come out for that. The building, okay. Our building here, I think was the, I think our number was $2.2 million for how much this building was valued at. I'm pretty sure that's the number.
That was the, that was an appraisal, what we thought.
What we thought it was.
No, that's, that's not been released yet. That's not been, that was our certified.
Certified, okay.
That's not what they asked for.
That's out there, okay.
They asked for the assessed value on this building.
Okay.
And I asked Mr. Foley to obtain that information.
Okay, okay. We'll wait till another day on that, then. Okay. Wait, does that have it?
What is it?
Mr. Foley, would you like to come to the podium?
That number would not, would not be the appraised value. It's the assessed value.
Assessed value, yes, I understand. Yes.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The assessed value presently on here is broken down because it's in the city of Scranton. The land is assessed at $125,000. When we use our multiplier of 6.67, that means that it has a market value of $813,750. The improvement assessment is $225,000. Again, when we use our multiplier of 6.67, that comes out to $1,575,000. So the total present assessed value between land and improvement is $2,334,500.
Geez, I was off by a hundred and some. Okay.
Now, the taxes on that, if you would like, the land, using $125,000, and using the millage, is .413711. The taxes on the land are $51,714, if it was taxable and not exempt. The improvement at $225,000 is .231754. That's the millage, and that would come out to $52,145,000. So the total property tax at present is $103,859. That's exempt at the present time, and that would transfer over to a new owner. All right?
Joan, just so the record reflects accurately, and I know what you're saying when you're using multiplier effect, but not so people are not confused or misunderstood, the assessed value on this building is $125,000 on the land and $225,000 on the improvements.
That is correct.
That's the answer to the question.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The total assessment would be $350,000.
That's correct. It is not $2,340,000. It is $350,000.
$50,000 would be the total.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. I just want to make certain that's corrected.
That brings up a good point. If Mr. Foley can discuss this times 6. Could you, how we had that discussion where we're timesing it?
6.67.
Yes, let the people know that they're not, because some people think that the assessed value on their tax bill is the actual market value that we're attributing to their property, when in fact it is not.
No, it is not.
Okay. Can you explain that to the public and for the viewing audience, so they understand how that works, Joan?
Well, the state publishes each year what they call a, the State Tax Equalization Bureau publishes a rate each year. And they take that by the deeds that are filed during the year, which we go through. We give them a step report. And they have a mathematical computation in which they come up with a factor, and that's called the common level factor. And the common level factor right now is .15.
.15, okay.
But you would use a multiplier to bring that into 100% value.
Which we tax at.
Which is the basis, which is the basis of Lackawanna County from previous years. So that multiplier factor is 6.67 for this current year, as of July 1st.
So if you have a property that is market value at $100,000, how would you figure out what your assessed value is?
You would times that by .15.
Thank you. And reversing that, you would times it by the 6 point?
You would reverse that assessed value by 6.67.
To come out with the market value.
Right. So they will both come out with a couple of dollars of each other.
Correct. So...
On which you're looking at.
So if you have a property that's assessed at, say, $15,500, what would the market value of, what would you be looking at as the actual?
$15,500, well, it would be roughly 15,500 times 6.67. Rough rule of thumb on that, if it was $15,000, you would times it by seven. And to give you a very fast answer, it would be $105,000.
Okay.
Okay, let's...
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Foley.
Just wanted to correct that, because I had someone say that their, their taxes were at $15,500, and they thought that's what the county thought the House was worth. And I said, "No, no, that's your assessed value, not the market value that the county thinks." The times that by that 6.7, whatever it is. Thank you, Joan.
Joan, it's all for the Gateway Building. That would be mostly the District Attorney's Office. We would want to have the District Attorney's Office involved in the Globe Store, because we're going to have too many people coming in and out. And District Attorney's Office, they're bringing, how do you say, individuals in that you wouldn't want, yeah, you wouldn't want them coming through the building. And, I mean, we have cases, murder cases, all kinds of different things that go on through the District Attorney's Office, so it needs to be separated.
Can't be accommodated in the county courthouse?
No, there's no space. It's very, it's full.
But they're looking at another building.
Yeah, we, it was always, that was, no, that was always part of, we owned the building already.
The county owns the Gateway Building.
Yeah, we always had it, so.
The only building we're occup...
We have the lease.
No, the only building we're paying a lease on is the Bricks Building, and that's for exclusive use of probation and parole.
And all the other leases until we do get into the Globe Store, which will be very soon. Delinquent taxes, we, the department tries to make sure that people have options so they don't lose their houses. They have payment plans and other opportunities. So, you know, it's not easy.
Short of that, short of that, we need to be aggressively pursuing people that pay taxes collecting. For you and I, cut the shortfall.
They actually do a very good job, actually. We're...
93%.
Yeah, we're 93%. That's very good. And in the past, they weren't collecting near that, like eight, 10 years ago. But since Director Koljeski's got there, it's gone up immensely. And we're cutting lots of checks, lots of municipalities. So there's, we're doing very, very, we're doing well. We're doing very well. There will be lots of informational opportunity out there for assessment. Probably, approximately, we're looking at quite a few meetings. Nothing's been set in stone yet, but we're going to make sure they're sectional throughout Lackawanna County.
Commissioner, our tentative plans are to make an announcement in the month of August of five regional informational meetings, but we're not prepared to do that today.
Yeah, nothing's locked at this point, but there will be plenty of information that will be put out between September and October, way before the general election. What else? Just wanted to also bring up, our emergency services department does such a great job. Dave Hahn and his staff, last week, you know, we've had tremendous amount of rain, lots of wind. And up in Susquehanna County, their emergency services building literally got flooded, flooded. They had no emergency services to call in. We brought in our mobile command unit, and they used it for 48 hours, so that someone called 911, they were getting somebody on the other line. And that was last week. Yesterday, another story. Benton Township, lots of rains, trees down, lots of power lines down. They've been, they've been on the scene since like 7:00 o'clock last night with generators. The electricity's down at the Fleetville Fire Company. They're working out of there, making sure there's electricity for the Fleetville Fire Company. Water's being brought in from the Red Cross, and PP&L is on scene, doing the work to get all of the lines up and running. But 911 services, emergency services is really, really, really on top of everything. The solar eclipse, I think that's going to be, I think that's a great opportunity for people to come with their families to see it. I remember there was a full solar eclipse, I think it was in 1977. And it was, I remember it was like, it came at like 12:00 o'clock in the afternoon. And I remember we were told the school to stay away from the windows. They kept the blinds down. But now it's a partial, and they're going to be able to wear glasses. So it shows how things have changed. And Commissioner Cummings talking about the first launch for NASA. I think that's great. I think that we should never stop for going into space. And the exploration of space has always been something from JFK forward that's been pushed forward. You know, I mean, first to be on the moon, it really matters. And I think that it's great that we're going to have our first launching in eight years. This coming weekend, we got, we got quite a few events. July 28th and 29th, the three-on-three basketball tournament will be starting this weekend, and that'll be starting on Friday at 5:00 p.m. on Wyoming Avenue. Any team that'd like to be involved, make sure you sign up. Arts on the Square, which I think it's the fourth, was it fourth or third, fifth, fourth, Fourth Annual. This was basically one block at one point. I think it's up to three blocks of the three blocks around the courthouse. I think it's up to three blocks of the three blocks around the courthouse. Great event. Go out, there's opportunities for your kids, have a great time. It's free. They're, they're doing chalk art on the, on the sidewalks. It's just a good day. And that's noon to 8:00 at the Lackawanna County Courthouse. Please come out. July 30th, the 40th anniversary of McDade Park, who's, you know, I mean, of our four parks, McDade is, is the most used. It is, it's so central, it's so centrally located to Scranton, Taylor, Old Forge and we're going to be celebrating the 40th anniversary of McDade Park at 11:00 AM inside the park. Anyone would like to come up. We're going to hopefully have some former commissioners and some other elected officials that are going to be there. Some of the McDade family will be on hand, hopefully, for the actual event itself because the park has such a great impact on the community. It serves, it serves the people so well. Free swimming and free opportunities to make family, family members, family memories come true. Also, on August 1st, we're going to be having our Arts in the Park at McDade Park and that's 10:00 AM to noon. That's the final one of the season. Please come out. Your kids will enjoy the art. There'll be hot dogs, drinks, music. It's a lot of fun and there's a lot of opportunities for the kids from not only arts, but learning about wildlife and other things. August 3rd, Arts Engage at the Trolley Museum, 10 to noon. Please come out to that. It's another free event. Wonderful for the families to get out and, like you said, make those memories happen. August 3rd, we're going to be having our drive-in downtown movie on the Washington Avenue side of the courthouse and the movie La La Land, which I think came basically in secret to getting an Oscar award last year, is going to be the movie that night. So, that'll be a great opportunity and that usually starts around 8 o'clock, 8:30. There'll be free popcorn and other things that's great for the family. And also on August 5th, Family Fun Day at Ellsworth Park, 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, free swimming, free hot dogs and a lot of other things. So, please come on up to Ellsworth Park. It's good for family, it's family fun. And that's about.
July 30th, 40th anniversary.
Yeah, talked about it. Yep, July 30th, McDade Park, 40th anniversary of McDade Park. Yep, invite everybody out. So, I'll bring it up again. July 30th, 40th anniversary of McDade Park, 11:00 AM. And you'll be able to hopefully meet some of the people who were the architects of the park at that point, some of the elected officials and other individuals. So, please come out if you're able to. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terry, Commissioner Cummings.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for viewing.